Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order with the clerk call the roll to establish a quorum.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Yeah.
Councilmember Tao.
Yeah.
Mayor Protem Talamantes.
Yeah.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Vice Mayor Maples.
Here.
Councilmember Gadda.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Vang.
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to ask Councilmembers Tao and Valenzuela, please, together to please lead us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance, may one or the other, however you choose to do it.
Which one do you want? Okay, I'll do the pledge of allegiance. Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Please rise for the opening acknowledgement in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands to the original people of this land, the Nisanan people, the Southern Mahidoo Valley and Plains Miwok, the Puttwin Wintu people, and the people of the Welton Ratria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who come before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in the active practice of acknowledgement and appreciation of Sacramento's indigenous peoples' history, contributions, and lives. Thank you.
Hey, please remain standing and salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next time, we'll switch.
Yes. How about at 5:00?
Yeah.
I think that's exactly the way we should do it here. Thank you to both the good and great public servants, Councilmembers Tao and Valenzuela. Members, we have one item of business this afternoon. It's a very important item. It is the consideration of a community benefits agreement ordinance. And Leslie Fritsch, are you going to present? I want to thank you and the entire city staff for working so hard on all this. Let me make an opening comment, if I may. I mean, you know, don't get to make opening comments too much longer, so make it brief. This, of course, arises out of the Aggie Square settlement agreement, which was a model community benefits agreement that was organized essentially by the community with some creative tension, ultimately in collaboration with the city, the developer, Wexford, and the University of California at Davis. And we created something that I think was really impactful and important to that project. As part of the settlement agreement, there was a provision that was requested by the S I W D to consider a citywide community benefits ordinance that could or would apply to other projects throughout the city. And so it's taken a while, as it often does in government, a lot of discussions with the community, with the city staff, some with the elected officials, et cetera. We actually heard this, I think, in some form at the beginning of 2024. And we are here now today to consider a staff proposal and the community's perspective, both the S I W D and the business community's perspective on all of this. And that's what brings us here today. So I just wanted to make that opening remark to kind of set the context. Leslie?
Well, it's my pleasure, Mayor Steinberg. I can say that, I think, perhaps the last time this afternoon to be here with you. And council members, thank you for allowing us to present today. This afternoon, we are bringing forward for your consideration a draft community benefit agreement ordinance as required by the Aggie Square settlement agreement with the Sacramento Investment Without Displacement. The ordinance before you would require a community benefit agreement for projects receiving over $10 million in city assistance. Putting this draft ordinance together, as the mayor has mentioned, has taken some time for we've tried to strike a balance between the input received from S I W D and community members and the business community. And what we've created is a defined CBA requirement, which includes benefits to the residents and neighborhoods adjacent to a proposed project while not negatively impacting development activity in our city. Our approach is to allow the tailoring of a CBA to the needs and parameters of the proposed project, rather than being too prescriptive and since one size doesn't fit all. We have outlined a framework and not a specific outcome. The draft ordinance contains the elements as required in the settlement agreement. Additionally, the draft ordinance respects the role of the council as the city's elected representatives to make the ultimate decision on the inclusion of elements within a CBA if one is triggered. It's important to note that it's the opinion of staff that a community benefits agreement is not necessarily needed to achieve community benefits on any particular project. We bring forward projects all the time, and we consider the benefits to the community as we're bringing those elements forward. Staff considers and incorporates community benefits in every project we bring forward for financial assistance, regardless of project size. So I wanted to highlight a couple examples where we fold in community benefits agreement. The mayor mentioned Aggie Square, and that project was a collaborative process. We had started some community benefit discussions and inclusion, and then with community input, that agreement was strengthened. Some of those elements included a 20% set aside for affordable housing, local construction hiring, housing stabilization, and workforce pilots. And just, I'm kind of going to brag a little bit and brag to you, Darrell, and, excuse me, Mayor Steinberg, and Councilmember Gadda, because that has really netted a lot of different benefits. $51 million committed for affordable housing along Stockton Boulevard, approximately $5 million for housing stabilization efforts, yielding about 800 people already assisted in some way or another through those stabilization efforts, and approximately $600 million in local contractor spending, and almost 90 apprentices hired from the local Aggie Square zip codes. So that's a broad example, a very large project. But then we have smaller projects such as the San Miguel Market, which was a $1.1 million loan for a grocery store at the corner of Broadway and Stockton, which filled a vacant storefront with an employee-owned grocery store. So it eliminated blight, and it created about 60 opportunities for the residents around the area, and also added and made sure that Oak Park wasn't a significant food desert by allowing that grocery store to continue. From a policy perspective, we've also ensured the consideration of community benefits in reviewing projects as they are foundational element in our councils' approved inclusive economic development policies and are included in the 2040 general plan. CBAs are commonly used across the country to ensure community benefits are provided, but it's rare that jurisdictions have approved an ordinance requiring them, as they are often viewed as detrimental to development and difficult to codify requirements, as each project has its own unique parameters and context. We've had many meetings with S I W D members over the past three years, I believe, they might correct me on that, over the course of the past number of years, and acknowledged that there are differences in approach. We are sensitive to those differences and thus wanted to make sure we had a transparent process where all views could be heard by council. Therefore, the format for today is staff will give a short presentation outlining the elements in the proposed ordinance we're bringing forward for your consideration, followed by a presentation by S I W D. We also want to highlight other stakeholders and other stakeholder views, such as that of Downtown Sacramento Partnership, the BIA, the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, and some of those comments you've received. We've included all the comment letters we've received prior to the posting in your report, and then there are additional ones that are posted through the e-comment process. With that, I'd like to turn over the conversation and the presentation to my colleague, Ellen Sullivan, who will provide you an overview of the proposed ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie.
Good afternoon. I'm Ellen Sullivan, Senior Project Manager with the City Manager's Office of Innovation and Economic Development. After staff's presentation, Sacramento Investment Without Displacement has prepared a presentation for council. We wanted to go over some of the key points of the draft CBAO. The ordinance currently has a threshold of $10 million of city investment or subsidy that would require a community benefits agreement. The ordinance defines subsidy consistent with Government Code 53083, as referenced in the Aggie Square settlement agreement, as an expenditure of public funds or loss of revenue to the city, such as grants, loans, or fee waivers. All CBAs require compliance with prevailing wage laws, local hire provisions, and designated third-party beneficiaries. These are requirements that cannot be waived. The benefits in the ordinance are required by the Aggie Square settlement agreement, transportation was an added benefit, and the ordinance allows council to add project-specific benefits. The ordinance also includes language to allow council to approve a CBA with some, none, or all of the listed benefits plus any additional benefits. This allows council the flexibility to tailor benefits that are most beneficial to the community while balancing the realities of delivering a project. The ordinance also provides exemptions for all housing projects, including certain mixed-use projects and pipeline projects that received site plan and design review approval by effective date of the ordinance. The ordinance requires the city manager engage the community at two key points, when developing the CBA and when evaluating the performance of the CBA. It also includes a provision to allow the city manager to adopt policies and procedures to implement and enforce the ordinance. This concludes our presentation, and now I'd like to turn it over to Sacramento Investment Without Displacement for their presentation, and staff is available after for questions.
That's great. We will listen to S I W D's presentation, we'll then hear from the public, and then we will debate and deliberate here. So who is presenting for Sacramento Investment Without Displacement? And thank you for being here and for all the time and effort you have all collectively spent on this.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I am Kim Williams. I am the Director for Sacramento Investment Without Displacement, as well as Sacramento Building Healthy Communities.
Tamika LaCruz. I am the Executive Director of the Sacramento Community Land Trust, as well as the Vice President of Sacramento Investment Without Displacement.
Kiara Reed, Executive Director of Civic Thread, and I'm the Transportation Chair for Sacramento Investment Without Displacement.
Q. All.
We will be presenting today. It'll be a brief presentation. As Leslie talked about earlier, this has been a long, long process, and there's still so much, so much, so much work that still has to be done. When we came together, Sacramento Investment Without Displacement, actually back in 2018 is when we started the work, and then up until this point, it was for the sole purpose of making sure that our communities don't get left in the dust when it comes to development. We want to see things happen in our city. We want our city to grow and prosper and be the wonderful Sacramento that we all want it to be and know it can be, but we also don't want that to happen and leave the people behind who have left blood, sweat, and tears in this city and have worked hard for generations but get pushed out because of that development. And there's a way to do it responsibly and do it together with the development, with the city, and with community. And so that's why we came together, and that is why we still stand here, and why we will continue, despite what happens today, continue fighting for our communities. And that's all communities in Sacramento. We want to, which one is it? I always do that. Yes. Our Sacramento Investment Without Displacement members, in case folks don't know, of course, it's Building Healthy Communities, Sacramento Housing Alliance, Organized Sacramento, Civic Thread, Sacramento Act, ECO, ACE, Washington Neighborhood Center, Love Lift, oops, sorry, Love, Lift Up, am I going to have my glasses on? Lift Up Love Always, and then the Sacramento Community Land Trust. We also have other members, individual members that are a part of this group, residents from different parts of the community that are also a part of S I W D. And our work really became, is really looking at what a community benefits agreement is and what it should be, and requiring, you know, strong partnerships between local government developers and community groups and working together to determine what is needed in a community. Every community, it's not a one-size-fits-all. We recognize that each community may need something different, and that's why we wanted to build that into what a community benefits agreement ordinance would look like. We know it was a, preferably it was a part of the lawsuit, how it ended up becoming an ordinance, there may be discussion as to who brought it to the settlement piece, but it got put in, and that was something that we were very proud of because we did want to see this happen, so that we don't have to come and fight every single project that comes, that there's a commitment from this group, this body, to the residents in Sacramento that says, if something is coming into your community, we want to make sure you are well taken care of. And this ordinance would also outline the CBAs, what would be required, what would go into them, and who would be involved in the process of creating and enforcing the CBAs going into the future. And so my counterparts are going to talk about what makes it strong.
So this isn't a surprise, because last time we were here, we talked about the same elements of what makes a strong CBAO. It's having minimum benefits, it's having strong community engagement and community-led decision-making power, and having an ordinance that is enforceable. Unfortunately, the ordinance that you have in front of you doesn't have those things. And for that reason, S I W D does not support the ordinance as it stands. This shouldn't be news. Again, we have been advocating for these to be included since 2021, and we haven't seen those things change. We've been fighting really to develop an ordinance that protects longstanding residents and that ensures that the benefits of any economic or infrastructure investments are shared and experienced by those impacted communities. But this ain't it. The draft that is before you is insufficient, and unfortunately, it will not address long-term anti-displacement protections for residents and small businesses that would be impacted. Research has shown us that community benefits, or weak community benefits agreements, will actually do more harm than not having one at all. If we can't put forward a strong ordinance that has those minimum benefits, that has community decision-making power, and that is enforceable, then S I W D can't stand behind it. And so we're not standing behind this one that's in front of you today. We believe that our residents and our small businesses deserve more than what's being offered to them. At its core, a CBA is about equitable access to decision-making power. It's about giving community members who may be harmed by displacement or by large developments the agency to come to the table and to ask for what they need, to really be able to communicate what their needs are, and to be able to have that decision-making power for the things that are going to impact their own livelihoods. It's really about respecting the needs of the community, and it's also about people over profit. Unfortunately, the current proposal lacks meaningful community participation, and let's be real. Siloing engagement and limiting community participation in decision-making processes only exacerbates what the CBA is intended to do. So why are we doing that? You can't have a CBA without community. It's literally in the name. So let's call it what it is. What you have before you is a benefits agreement ordinance. It's not a community benefits agreement ordinance, and it's not intended to benefit the community, and so we won't stand behind it. Thank you.
And I'm sure that's not what you probably were expecting to hear from us today. But Kiara laid it out really perfectly clear. A weak community benefits agreement is like worse than having no community benefits agreement at all. So we want to speak to this process because while I appreciate, you know, the reflection of the Aggie Square project and the San Miguel Market over there on Stockton Boulevard, which would not have triggered our community benefits agreement, this wouldn't have, the benefits of Aggie Square would not have come out if we hadn't settled a lawsuit. These are the same things we asked then that we're asking you all now. And the fact that the city of Sacramento put themselves in a position to be a defendant of that lawsuit, that's not how we want to continue working. That is not how we want to continue doing development and doing community benefits. I think that, we think as a collective, that it's really unfortunate that the direction that your council gave on February 28th of this year was to conduct a workshop to where Sacramento Investment Without Displacement and the business community and the PBIDs and small business owners and construction workers and the unions could all come together and really talk about how we can make this a win-win for all of Sacramento, and that did not happen. When we talk about meaningful engagement, it means that both parties, both sides come with their whole hearts and whole selves to the table, and that did not happen from the city's side. We were really hopeful with the Small Business Protections Ordinance work that this could be something where we could come together and work out the details to make this strong enough to benefit all of Sacramento, and that did not happen. And so that leaves us with this whole of, where's the trust that was supposed to be built in this process? And that's a question, I think, really for your leadership, for you guys here at the dais, because that trust really has been broken. We have come in good faith over these past three years to do the work, to bring forward minimum benefits, to bring a tiered ordinance, to bring all these different tools and resources to make this the best ordinance it could be, and that did not happen. That is not what's in front of you today. So as Sacramento Investment Without Displacement rejects the city's draft of the community benefits agreements ordinance, I suppose this means that we will continue to look at every single development, and if there isn't a community benefits agreement, that really puts community first, that brings that investment that the city is putting into that development, those investments need to go directly to the people who are impacted by them. And it's unfortunate that we're put in a position to fight for benefits for every single project. That is not a good use of our time. That is not a good use of our resources, the community's resources, nonprofit, we're nonprofits, but also staff resources. This is unacceptable. So I'll just close with saying that this is unfortunately a lost opportunity for the city of Sacramento. My hope is that maybe a future council will bring something back that is stronger, that has community at the forefront, that has minimum benefits, that the community decides where that investment goes to. And I also want to say that we're not going away. Like Kiara said, we started this work in 2018 together, and we're all still here, and we'll continue to be here, and we'll continue to hold the city accountable, we'll continue to hold big developers accountable, and we hope that you do the same.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you to all three presenters. Let us now hear from the public, and then we will turn it over to the council, and I'm going to say a few things to begin and then turn it over to my colleagues.
Thank you, Mayor. I have 11 speakers. The first is Robert Copeland, Alberto Mercado, Scott Ford, Rashid Siddique.
As an ACE member and a DOCKFIRE member, which is a disability rights group here in Sacramento, this ain't working for Sacramento. A community benefits agreement should benefit everybody in Sacramento. Is it going to do that? I don't think so. Can you please get your act together? I mean, low-income housing should be accessible for people in wheelchairs, walkers, and 20% affordable housing, is that all income levels? What's income level at this rate? Does it help people on the asset side minimum wage? Can it do better? We can vote you out. Thank you.
Next speaker is Alberto and Scott Ford.
Good afternoon, council members and mayor. My name is Alberto Mercado. I'm a resident of Oak Park, and I've been a resident in Sacramento for the last 30 years. As a resident of District 5, I urge my city council representative and city of Sacramento to reject the current version of the city's proposed community benefits agreement ordinance. Currently, the draft community benefits agreement ordinance does not sufficiently address the long-term anti-displacement protections for the residents and the businesses as it was intended. On a personal level, I am advocating for a community benefits agreement ordinance to include minimum benefits, to make sure residents like myself can stay and live in our neighborhoods where we grew up. Affordable housing, transportation, workforce development, small local business protection, and community having a direct role in CBA negotiation is critical to the development of community benefits agreement. Residents represent the people most threatened by the impact of large developments in their communities and must also enjoy the benefits they bring. Thank you.
Next speaker is Scott Ford and Rashid Siddique.
Good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg, members of the council, city manager Chan, and city staff. My name is Scott Ford, on behalf of the Downtown Sacramento Partnership, representing the 66-block neighborhood in the heart of California's capital city. And on personal note, I also represent the entire Sacramento community. I grew up here. Yes, we represent the business community, but we represent the entire Sacramento community, and we care deeply about our city. We recognize that the council must consider community benefits agreement ordinance as part of the Aggie Square settlement. However, we have strong concerns with the proposal as written, and we adamantly urge the rejection of this ordinance, as we are concerned it has the potential to undermine the growing momentum in our community. We agree absolutely that community benefits should be delivered as part of catalytic projects, especially projects that receive public subsidy, but those negotiations need to play out on a case-by-case basis, given the unique and the very delicate nature of each project. Simply put, there are no community benefits if there is no project. Recently, we've seen great opportunities, legacy projects, stadiums in the rail yards, adaptive reuse, live music venues, and a much-needed convention center hotel come forward. Those are great projects with major potential, but they're also very delicate, and we're concerned that this is well-intended but counterproductive policy that may jeopardize those very projects. Now is not the time to bring forth a one-size-fits-all ordinance, which will limit future opportunities for the residents while also not addressing their needs. We thank you for your consideration, for your leadership, and we're committed to continue to be here and to work with all of you and to work with our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Rashid, and then Luz Lim and Jamison Parker.
Rashid Siddique with Lift Up Love Always. I'm here with a heavy heart because I've seen a lot of good work go down the drain for three years. Mayor, we've been waiting for, I don't know, 18 months to get to our workshop. I don't know. So a PLA, just had a discussion, PLAs at the school district is a $1 million to benefit the whole community. Here, we're talking about $10 million. I don't know how many times you've contributed $10 million to a project, but I bet you it's near to none. So what you put in front of us has to be rejected because it's a joke. It's not intended to help anybody. It's intended to check a box and let's move on. Everybody's, Mayor, and then you put us on your last day, on your last day. That was intentional.
No, it wasn't.
Yes, this is intentional racism right here. This is intentional, and I see it as that. And I, hey, listen, your day is your last day. Thank you for all your contributions, but this right here is disrespectful. We've been working on this for three, four, some have been working on it since 2018 with your leadership, and here we are on your last day, and you feed us. Come on, this, we have to do better, city manager. We have to do better than this. Next week is going to be your week. We're going to see. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Luz Lim, then Jamison Parker, then Devon Strucker, Matt McDonald.
Good afternoon. My name is Luz Lim, and I am here to speak on behalf of the Environmental Council of Sacramento. I'll keep it brief because I really can't put it any better than the S I W D folks who are here today. It's clear how passionately they have worked over the past years to make sure that community has a place at the table and a voice in deciding what community benefits should be. The proposed agreement ordinance does not account for S I W D's very thoughtful recommendations to create an effective citywide ordinance, and it excludes community at benefit negotiations. ECO stands with S I W D in opposition to the proposed community benefits agreement ordinance, and we have submitted a letter via ecomments. Thank you very much.
Jamison Parker.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I just want to start by thanking staff for their hard work on this project. I'm Jamison Parker with the Midtown Association. We're a property-based improvement district here in the central city. We represent about 1,200 property owners in our urban core. Our mission is to make Midtown the center of culture, creativity, and vibrancy. I'm here today to voice our opposition to the agreement in front of you today. I think actually, Leslie- I think actually Luz Lim did a really great job. We're not opposed to developing community benefits, but we believe that it needs to be done on a project-by-project basis. We believe that in doing so, that the city council retains its flexibility to be able to make sure that we're able to achieve our outcomes based on individual's projects' impacts, and that they are most supportive and responsive to the community that they are impacting. At the same time, this flexibility ensures that economic development agreements are created that don't slow or halt positive momentum that we have in our city, and what we really experienced in the last month, seeing the preliminary term sheet come forward for the Sacramento rail yards and the development of our stadium. In working to achieve this common goal of delivering sustainable economic growth, we employ the city council to consider a thoughtful economic growth without creating a burden through this ordinance, which could create unintended limitations on our future and the city council's ability to manage it. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
If your comments, Devin Strecker, Matt McDonald, Chris Valencia, Barry Broom.
Good afternoon. I'm Devin Strecker, executive director of the River District and a resident of District 4. River District would like to express our opposition to this ordinance. As you know, we are a redeveloping area of downtown Sacramento. We are different from much of the rest of the region, uh, and so our needs are different. And so for that reason, we would ask that you would consider these type of community benefits, which we do see as valuable, but on a case-by-case basis. We are trying to redevelop a formerly industrial warehouse distribution center. We did not have any, um, very many residents until just recently, and our residents are looking for these catalytic projects to come in, such as the proposed Sacramento FC Stadium in the rail yards. And we, we are hopeful that there will be no additional layers of bureaucracy to prevent these types of projects from moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Matt McDonald.
Good afternoon. Matt McDonald from the California Apartment Association, speaking in opposition to Community Benefits Agreement Ordinance. In short, we oppose the creation of a one-size-fits-all policy with respect to large economy-building projects that have the power to act as engines for future growth in the city. The instinct to expect community benefits to play a role in future major projects is not wrong, but Sacramento needs to respect the reality that within this region, there are multiple other jurisdictions that lack Sacramento's red tape, and who are frankly far easier for major developers to do business with. Raising your barriers to entry through an untailored ordinance doesn't just discourage investment, it creates a reputational problem for the city. It says, if you have a major project, we don't want to be at the top of your destination list. Once you've built a reputation for being hostile to this new investment, that impacts your ability to do everything else vital in the city, like increased housing supply or reducing homelessness. Being aspirational in economic development becomes impossible at that point. We would urge you to reject this proposed ordinance today and send a signal to the region that you're committed to being competitive for major projects region-wide. Thank you.
Chris Valencia, then Barry Broom.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and city council. My name is Chris Valencia. I am here speaking on behalf of the North State Building Industry Association. We want to thank council and staff for working with us to, insert language on housing into this. We just want to urge caution, uh, when considering the Community Benefits Ordinance, that this could create a cooling effect on development, giving developers pause, and we definitely do not want to see home building in the Sacramento region slow to a trickle. Uh, it is important that we continue to, uh, continue to attract, uh, investment into Sacramento, into building housing, as well as other projects. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Barry Broom, then Sarah Robolato.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we're gonna contest, first off, you know, we want to work with the neighborhoods, and we're always available, I reach out to Gabby, so, uh, we can start tomorrow working together. We don't need to be guided by the city, and we're committed to helping everyone. The reality on the Aggie Square agreement is UC Davis and the city's the payer on this, not the developer. Developer doesn't have a discretionary penny in this settlement. So if you start moving this around other parts of the city where UC Davis isn't backing it up, you're gonna run into the private conditions, which is this developer would've walked away if you'd have said you gotta pick up the city's contribution towards Aggie Square. The second thing, if you look at the union agreements from APSME, um, uh, they pretty much keep local businesses from participating in this project. So maintenance construction workers have to come from UC Davis Union workers, a real missed opportunity for minority ownership and participation from the neighborhood. There's food union agreements, we already know, uh, from one local vendor that was trying to get a big opportunity at Aggie Square that was minority-owned, was, was turned down by the legal department of UC Davis because they're not unionized. So if you look at Aggie Square, it, it's, you know, the city's paying, the university's taking the risk, labor's getting all the benefits, and not everybody in this community's in labor, right? Very small percentage of people in the private sector in California are in unions, about 6%, 12%. So 88% of the people aren't at a union. And when you start looking at minority enterprises and minority participation, they're typically not unionized. So, um, we do think the construction agreement was very good. We, we're all for local options on requiring local hiring. We're, we're Sacramento guys, I live in Midtown, we want to see people pulled from the neighborhoods. But I think we're overstating the value of Aggie Square when it comes to community impact, when you really start to pull it apart and take a look at it. So obviously, we oppose a blanket ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, um, Sarah Robolato, and thank you for the spelling, and then Josh Leachman.
Good afternoon, y'all. I'm Sarah Robolato. I'm the managing attorney with Legal Services of Northern California. We were at the table when the community, the idea for the Community Benefits Agreement Ordinance was conceived, and agreed upon, and developed, and that idea actually came from the city, to bring the parties together and to create something innovative for Sacramento. And the idea is a good one. A good CBAO has the potential to create a collaborative structure for future projects, ensure meaningful benefits and protections for the communities that host these future projects and bear the impacts, and to prevent the mess that comes from ad hoc basis negotiating these agreements. The work that S I W D has engaged in over the last three-plus years is truly remarkable. They commissioned professional research about CBAs and CBAOs across the nation. They met continuously as a coalition to pool their collective wisdom and experience. They did several workshops and community surveys that reached over 300 residents and over, in over more than, uh, 20 zip codes, and they drafted memos and ordinance language, and they met with the city on a weekly basis for months at a time. And when the city ultimately brought forward a framework and an ordinance that lacked any resemblance to the CIWD's proposals, they cuffed up their sleeves and they got to work in good faith with the city to provide detailed comments and recommendations. They spent countless hours and meetings with, with the city, with you all, with stakeholders, all to try to reach a compromise and bring the vision that the city promised to life. But the CBAO before you doesn't live up to that promise. The community is absent from this CBAO. There's no role for the community to be at the table negotiating future CBAs. It's relegated to a, to a role of providing input. There's no guardrails or requirements for community oversight, and it lacks specifics that is required by research. And for the reasons stated in our letter, neither the process nor the draft complies with the settlement agreement. This is a missed opportunity.
Thank you for your comments, Josh Leachman, then Deion Dwyer.
Good afternoon, Deion Dwyer, representing the R Street Partnership. Good afternoon, Mayor and council. I want to thank staff and everyone here. This is obviously a topic that's important to the entire community, and as a resident of Tahoe Park, I understand how we try to balance community, and we try to balance development. The ordinance that you have before you today, we are opposed, uh, the one-size-fits-all model. We realize that we need to negotiate on a one-by-one basis for what fits the developer and what's fits the community. So I would like to say again, on record, R Street Partnership opposes, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. I have three more speakers, Josh Leachman, James Allison, and Liz Williams. I don't see Josh.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members and staff. My name is James Allison with Power &amp; Alliance, a property business improvement district representing Sacramento's manufacturing and industrial core, as well as the 1,300 businesses within it. Uh, I am here today to offer a few of our concerns with the Community Benefits Agreement Ordinance, uh, and rather than simply reiterate many of the same concerns that you've already heard, I'd like to speak to our chief concern and how it relates to our district. Firstly, we believe that community benefits are an integral part to any transformative project. We simply believe that this ordinance is not the strategy by which to achieve them. The Power &amp; Alliance is home to the Sacramento Center for Innovation, a 24-acre special planning district with the hopes of becoming Sacramento's hub for pioneering and innovative businesses. We believe that the success of such a district would bring significant investment to the city of Sacramento, but not without a centralized tentpost catalytic project that can truly attract investment in the same way that we have seen, uh, in other parts of our city. We, however, believe that the ordinance in front of you today would create a hindrance in securing such a project. As we have seen, uh, with some of the projects here in Sacramento, the ability to create these benefits is not impossible without such an ordinance in place. We simply ask that the SCI be given the same opportunity to create a truly tailor-made and customized approach to our own community benefits to maximize the benefit, uh, within southeast Sacramento. Thank you very much, and we appreciate your time.
And Liz Williams will be our final speaker on this item.
Good afternoon, Mayor, city council, city staff, city manager. Thank you all for your work that you've done on this. I'm here today on behalf of the Metro Chamber and the member businesses we represent, their employees, their families, who all grow up in this city. We would like to take a moment to appreciate the tenacity of the mayor and this council and the city manager and staff for working diligently to bring together a space for public-private partnerships that drive inclusive economic prosperity for this city and region. We have seen over the last few weeks and years what this type of collaboration can do to bring to light catalytic projects to the city of Sacramento. But as we all know, projects with such magnitude, like the ones coming to the rail yards, like the Golden One Center, and like Aggie Square, are delicate, complex, and require flexibility to bring to fruition. For these reasons, we urge you to reject a one-size-fits-all policy to address community benefits for large-scale public-private investments. Community benefits should not be prescribed by policies that could have unintended consequences and deter the viability of the types of investments we want to see in the city and region for the future generations to enjoy. We should strive to create a climate that attracts and retains major projects in every part of Sacramento. As they come forward, investments into the community should be proactive and tailored to the uniqueness of the project and the surrounding neighborhood for the betterment of all. Flexibility will be pivotal to ensure project acquisition and economic investments land here, and without projects, our ability to nurture our communities and grow collective, grow collectively is limited. We urge you to reject this proposal before you today, and instead work in collaboration with the community and development partners to proactively create active strategic initiatives throughout Sacramento by navigating each development opportunity with imagination and individuality. Thank you for your consideration and opportunity to comment today.
Please. Thank you, uh, that's all, Madam Clerk? Thank you very much. Okay, I'm gonna start off here, um, and then turn it over to my colleagues. First of all, thank you for all the public participation. Thank you to S I W D for all of the time you spent on this. Thank you to the city staff. I, I hear your disappointment. But I don't think we should pass anything that has virtually no support from either side. And that's the case here. So I guess that's the bottom line, but I want to use a moment here just to say something which may sound a little bit corny, but I, I mean it. We all are friends. We are not enemies. We are not enemies here. We may see things a little bit differently about how to achieve community benefits, but my whole life, as well as the lives and the contributions of everyone sitting on this dais, has been for and about community. Trust goes both ways. I understand, I see Rashid, I understand your distrust of the systems and of people like me. And I could say till I'm blue in the face, we've produced more affordable housing these last years than ever before. We have a comprehensive, uh, CWTA, Community Worker Agreement, a PLA for anything over a million dollars. I could say to you that we've invested unprecedented amounts of money in workforce development or in forgotten commercial corridors, or we've gotten to 1,500 beds now, uh, in terms of our homeless response from a low of less than 100 when we started. I could say all of that. And I know this, and I'm not offended by it, I just recognize that we all have a long way to go, including me, and all of us, when it comes to building trust, that none of that has an impact on you. But telling us that Aggie Square, the Community Benefits Agreement, would not have occurred in any form but for what S I W D did, I disagree. You were a key partner, and yes, you were the catalyst, and you pushed us farther, there's no question about it. But frankly, when I got involved with Aggie Square, you better believe front and center in my mind was community benefit. That's the whole reason for it. I negotiated the mandatory, not, not advisory, local hiring requirement, the only one in the country. That didn't come from S I W D, that came from this office. We put the number $50 million into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and so, trust goes both ways, and I look at Aggie Square, and I ask, why was it so important and impactful? It was important and impactful because it was in fact organic, and you deserve a lot of credit for that. It was organic. It was the product of a dynamic and sometimes uncomfortable tension between the stakeholders, care holders in the community, from whatever side, and their elected representatives, who, who you do have the opportunity, as Mr. Copeland said, to elect or to throw out of office if you don't like the job that they are doing. It addressed the unique circumstances of Aggie Square, including the real threat of gentrification. That was the impetus behind this, and it was right. The ideal of a citywide ordinance is laudatory, and whether you believe me or not, I believe in community benefit agreements. But a citywide ordinance with mandatory minimums, in my view, is a flawed concept. It's a flawed concept because every project is different and needs different community As I mentioned, we have minimum benefits in this city, PLAs, for example, for public works projects. But minimum benefits are premised on the idea that every major project causes displacement. That isn't true. I mean, look at the rail yards. What, what is the displacement that is being caused in, in developing the rail yards? The waterfront. The hospital in Atomus, by the way, as well as the rail yards, have mandatory affordable housing requirements, significant mandatory affordable housing requirements built into the development agreements. So I just think that sometimes trust or lack of trust is conflated with disagreement, because I applaud, and in many ways, trust you, because you're out there fighting for the community. But I think the best community benefits agreements are ones that are derived when we repeat what we did with Aggie Square. We organize, you organize, you have effective representation that meets you more than halfway, and that fights for what's best for the community. The defeat of this today does nothing to inhibit or limit that kind of ethic, that kind of, that kind of pattern, that kind of activism going forward. It should continue. I just think this concept of a citywide ordinance with minimums is flawed. Thank you. Councilmember Valenzuela?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree. I mean, sometimes when nobody agrees, it means we've reached a good compromise, and sometimes it means we've just missed the mark. And I think that latter case is the case today. You know, there's a lot of details in this ordinance in discuss that I'm not gonna get into, because I raised very detailed comments every time it was at law and ledge, every time it came to this body, and gave detailed suggestions, a lot of which I don't see in here. And I do want to applaud the community work, because as was mentioned, these are nonprofits, many of whom are not paid to do this, who engaged with us diligently for a very long time, um, to try to find a solution that made sense, and I want to thank you for your time and energy on that. And I want to reiterate your comment, because I do agree, and at one point I disagree with the mayor, that, um, if this ordinance was in effect when Aggie Square came about, that we wouldn't have gotten near the level of benefits that were achieved in Aggie Square. It sets way too high a bar. In fact, EIFEs aren't even covered in the CBA ordinance. Um, you know, it's, it's really unfortunate, and to push back a little on a comment about there not really being benefits, just because I have to, um, most service workers in this region are people of color, Barry, and they deserve living wages and benefits. I don't think we ever win. We don't win when we pit business owners against workers, and I think we- We don't win when we pit business owners against workers, and I think we can all benefit and can and should be working together to ensure that we rise the boat for everybody, and it's not about pitting minority business owners against workers because we all have the same goal. I've heard throughout this time with staff that obviously if an elected city council member for an area wanted a change to any agreement, that they would have a seat at the table, that this is deferring to council members. But I have to say that just a couple weeks ago, when we considered the rail yards EIFD, which is directly adjacent to my district and will eventually be in my district in just a week's time, and to the mayor's comment about what displacement is happening for the rail yards, there's a lot of displacement happening because of the rail yards development, I made a request for an enhanced community benefits process. I didn't even ask for specific benefits. I made a request for a stronger process, and that was denied. So my time on this council has not shown that council members of that district or near that district have the autonomy to advocate for what their community needs in a way that will guarantee benefits in the way that this ordinance is currently designed. And so my opposition to this comes from a very different place, that I just fundamentally don't believe that the mechanism that's designed here will work in good faith in the way that staff says that it will. I unfortunately do agree that we're in a stronger position to fight project by project, and I don't think that's good for anybody. And I just want to say that right now, not just from capacity perspective. What I've continued to insist with the business community is that we acknowledge that consistency and predictability is good for everybody, that if we know going in that there's a 10% affordable housing requirement, if we know going in that there's certain benchmark expectations, that that's good for everybody, rather than one project getting subject to $50 million of requirements and another getting subject to none. That is not a level of consistency that anyone can take to the bank, and it's not a level of consistency that the community wants either. I think we had an opportunity here to find something that would have worked for everybody that we missed. And so now, I do believe we're in a stronger position without this ordinance in place to advocate project by project, and I'm looking forward to joining you all in that work in just a couple of short weeks. So with that, I would actually like to make the motion to reject the ordinance with a lot of heartache and regret, but I do think it's important to recognize when we just have irreconcilable differences. I don't think we're going to get there as a majority on this body and with the staff team, and so I think it's just important for us to put this to bed and make that motion. Mayor, thank you.
Moved and seconded, Councilmember Gueda.
Thank you very much. You know, Mayor, I appreciate this, and you know, I wanted to also, one, I think if anything, first, give a lot of thanks to our city staff that took a lot of time trying to bring the two parties together, the two very disparate, you know, points of view. And, you know, I mean, it's, I can imagine it's difficult to come to the, to hear and present on a proposal and hearing, you know, every single different person come at it for a different reason why they're opposed to it. But I want to tell you just personally, because I've been in those conversations since 2019, and to say that I greatly appreciate how much time, you know, that has been put into this, the legal work, the policy work, the looking at the trade-offs to try to find something. And so for me, I just, I want to personally first thank the staff because they were put in a very difficult position to try to find something that everyone could come over here and say, you know, this is where we should be going. And they came at it with understanding the true needs that, one, our economy is fragile, you know, that all of the places that the mayor just mentioned, including the need that we still have a challenge with because of interest rates and other things out of our control, the development of housing that are at risk. And also, you know, the clear focus, and, you know, I want to thank Leslie, you know, because she was at all of those community meetings, whether they were in Tahoe Park, Fruit Ridge Manor, Oak Park Community Center, you know, to understand the needs and also the fragility of the community, and to be able to develop so many benefits out of what happened in those negotiations. And it's always interesting how people remember things because the framework that came out of the CBA actually was agreed upon before the lawsuits were filed. You know, we were already moving down that path, and so I think to the mayor's point, this, the issue of trust is one that, you know, post this action, we need to work on because it was that lack of trust that, hey, we're going to miss this deadline, so let's file the lawsuit. And what happened because of that is it actually ended the conversations that we had. It stalled the conversations and the work that we were already doing. We already were working on the housing issues, the transportation issues, the small business protection issues. And in fact, the, I mean, the work that SWID presented when we passed the Small Business, you know, plan two weeks ago is an example of that work. And that was, those were conversations we had right in the middle of when we were all trying to learn how to use Zoom. And to think that that, those are, those are things about the benefits are that came about. And, I mean, I have to, you know, give a lot of credit to the mayor here because even in the Golden One Center project, local hire was a goal. It was an aspiration, wasn't a requirement. I mean, the fact that that came out from the mayor's office to negotiate between the two parties because the, it wasn't the city, it was the developers also with the UC that wouldn't all agree upon the issue, but to get a mandatory local requirement, and then on top of that, 20% is hard enough to meet, to go say, in 10 years, we got to get to 25, and to get everybody at the table to reach that, that is a huge amount. And so, you know, I think the other point here, and this is, there are one issue where I do disagree with the comments about the other lawsuit with APSME. A lot of, a lot of the Local 3299 folks, they live in my district. And even before Aggie Square got started or the conversation, those workers had already faced a potential displacement from the psychiatric hospital that was going to get privatized. And what this solidified was, and again, I want to thank the mayor on this because he was the one that could, was able to get into that negotiation to find out how to be able to make sure that those local residents who didn't have a place to go to, and they moved to these neighborhoods because they could walk or bike to work closely or use public transit, those were benefits out of that point. But all of those pieces even before then, you know, they were already happening because of that community work. So to all the, to say is that, again, the CB, the community benefits agreement itself and the lawsuits, I think would have ended up almost in the same place where we were at today. So the question really comes down to, in the future, how do we continue to build trust to get to these negotiations? Because if it's always going to end up in lawsuits, we're going to find out that we were stuck in a stalemate, and it wasn't until, and I got to thank Gabby Trejo for this because she was the broker that brought people together from both sides to say, hey, can we, can we, you know, everybody put their, you know, what do you call it, their figuratively legal guns aside and get back to the table with the city, the UC, and the developers. So, you know, the, so I want to make sure that we don't conflate what the real history was and actually getting to. What I think is a great success, and because of that, because of that, we tried to replicate it here in a different way. And we shouldn't, you know, we shouldn't be upset that we tried, okay? I mean, we shouldn't be upset that we tried. If you don't try, sometimes you're going to fail, you know, but we shouldn't be upset that we actually tried to make something positive. But the reality is, is this proposal doesn't meet what we want to meet in either way. And the reality that I think we all can agree on, it is detrimental to both people's perspective. And in my opinion here, I mean, I appreciate the motion to reject, so glad to support that motion. I also think the motion just to lay on the table is the appropriate motion as well indefinitely. So, but either way, glad to, glad to either support the motion to reject, but also the, if it approves, you know, the maker of the motion, motion to lay on the table would be the, I guess, the preferred parliamentary procedure in this one. So with that, I'll leave it there. Mr. Mayor, and, you know, I just, again, I just want to thank our team, you know, because we did put you in an impossible situation, and the only thing that I think that should be recognized is the effort that was made to try to get the council, the community, and all of the interested parties to get to the table. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I just want to add that, too. For those who are disappointed, and a lot of people are disappointed, do not blame this staff here. This is the direction of the, you know, it's representative of the direction of the public officials. Like I said, in my view, it is a laudatory concept. It just doesn't work to prescribe minimums for projects that are, by definition, fundamentally different from one another. But this is, the staff did a good job here, as did SAWD, worked its hard on. Okay, do we have anybody else? We do not. There is a motion on the table to oppose, reject. Thank you. Okay, let's call the roll, please.
Thank you, Councilmember Kaplan. Councilmember Tao. Mayor Protem Telemantes. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Maples.
Aye.
Councilmember Gueda.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. The work continues. I hope the work continues into the next administration. Maybe there is a formula that no one has, no one has yet come up with despite great efforts. Okay, that concludes the afternoon meeting. Do we have council ideas and questions, or do we have any? Tonight at 5:00, we're going to begin with some special presentations, and then we actually have a substantive agenda tonight. So we will look forward to all of that. If there's nothing else to come before the city council, we are adjourned.